Good evening. I'd like to call to order the Norfolk School Committee for Tuesday, August 6th at 7:03 PM. As we do with all of our meetings, we start with our mission statement. The Norfolk Public Schools offers a safe, joyful, and challenging learning environment that meets the needs of our diverse students. Through school, family, and community partnerships, we provide an education that inspires lifelong learners and cultivates caring and productive citizens of our ever-changing world. Who'll call?
Kelly Peterson.
Thomas Doyle.
Sean Dooley.
Ingo Delaney.
Okay, great. As we do in all of our meetings, we start off with public comment. Anyone that wants to make a comment from the audience, please introduce yourself. There should be a -- there's a microphone stand over there. Say your name and how you're affiliated with the schools or what your street address is. And just as a reminder, this is being taped for broadcast by NCTV, so keep that in mind. No one's rushing to the microphone. All right. Let's see, correspondence, we don't have any. Okay, on my report, we have the membership list. Could you just check, make sure that's -- does anyone have any changes in the -- in that? No, we're correct. That says I'm an alternate. Yep. Okay. Kelly, you good?
I'm good.
All right. All right. Moving on, school building project update. A few things. Obviously, we've had, you know, the -- in case you didn't, if you came down, Boardman, today, you'll see that they've started laying out the field. And so that's getting underwrite. We've -- through what seems like never-ending negotiations with the general contractor, we finally reached an agreement for them to finish up the field and finish the playground in the center island of the bus loop. So that has been started. Do we have a -- do they have an estimated finish date?
They were estimating from the time of start, six weeks.
Right.
So that would put it about the end of the first week of September.
Okay. And then included the full playground?
Yes.
Yeah.
And the field is going to be hydro-seated, so it won't be usable till spring, but it should be complete, the project, you know, sometime in September.
Yeah, I think that's right. So the mobilization was six weeks.
Yep.
And they were already a week into it.
Right.
Although the playground started after.
Yeah, the playground was just last week.
Right.
Correct. Yes, that's correct.
You know, some of the things we pulled out of it was, you know, like the fencing, things like that, just because we can get it much cheaper after the fact elsewhere. So that's moving along. We filed numerous warranty claims through the town, and we've had to officially notify, you know, the roofer, the gym floor. What was the third big one?
HVAC.
HVAC. So those were -- are in the process. We're meeting again -- Todd met with?
We had a meeting with MSBA Monday, the 5th, and it was with their audit team. So our business manager, Todd Hassett and Donna Chisholm went with the reps from Jocelyn and Lesser, and they went through the pro pay and any funds that were in debate as to whether or not they were reimbursable. MSBA has said that Jocelyn Lesser has to submit a couple of budget amendments, and then, once they get that paperwork, it's going to take them a couple of weeks to go through and give us the final accounting. So they don't expect to have that ready until the beginning of September because of vacation schedules at MSBA and because they're waiting for some paperwork from Jocelyn Lesser.
Which they've probably been waiting for for quite some time.
Did we get a sense of the amount that was outstanding as of the last meeting? Did they give an overall, like, okay, you know, hey, X amount of this looks decent?
No, because what they did, a lot of it will, there's about 800,000, my understanding from Todd, that will be cleared up right away when they file the budget amendment.
Is that the miscoded?
It's money that, if you submit something and it looks like it's over budget, they say it's ineligible.
Right.
But there were budget amendments that were supposed to be submitted to change those. So once that's filed, about 800,000 of it will be completely cleaned up. There is about 4 million of charges that they're going through line by line, so we don't know the balance on that.
And we don't know how many of them were, what were they terming, is miscoded?
Yeah, we don't yet. We will when we -- that's what they're going to come back to us with, once they get all the budget amendments in their audit teams.
So it's by September, we'll have the -- good idea, okay.
Yeah, and it's just frustrating, you know, I know for me and for the rest of the committee, that we've had to, you know, Jocelyn Lesser, this is their job, this is what they've been hired to do, and we've had to go out and do this on our own and have Todd be the lead person. But that's neither here nor there, so it's, you know.
Hope to have good accounting.
Yeah, we're kind of stuck with Jocelyn Lesser at this point, so.
So we're not even going to have a full picture by our next building committee meeting?
No. So I don't know, to be honest, I don't know if Greg will request that we reschedule that because you don't --
I would.
There's nothing new to vote on at the August meeting because we've already mobilized for the playground, and you won't have any additional budget information.
Because that was the only pressing thing, was the playground, so I would.
Yeah, and the budget accounting.
We would soon leave for the September, and then we have actually an idea, and then at that point meet, because otherwise, we're just wasting time.
Yeah, I think it would make more sense to meet once that's done.
Okay. The next thing is, on August 27th, is the teacher staff opening meeting. We're have the, is the TPA providing the?
Is it the 28th?
It's the Wednesday. I'm sorry, I think that date might be wrong.
I'll tell you what I have in my calendar.
I think the 27th, this is a retreat.
Oh, 28th.
Sorry.
28th.
Sorry, it's 28th. I apologize.
So it's the 28th, and that's at 8:00 AM, right?
Yep.
Okay. And I presume the TPA is providing the refreshments again this year?
Yep.
And so everyone's --
Taking care of breakfast, yep.
On the committee is welcome to go to that, and that's the, you know, to welcome the teacher and all the staff back to introduce some of our new people and make sure everyone's welcome.
And we sent an invitation to this.
And Slutman's, okay, good, good, good. Superintendent Evaluation, I left my evaluation book in the car, so if anyone else wants to go through the evaluation, what I think we should do is have the, you know, everything gone through in that book by September, so we can sit down and meet, make sure we have everything on, you know.
It's me and Jeff. Has he seen it yet?
Actually, I think Pam scanned almost all of it for him, didn't you? I think we scanned most of it.
So, yeah, so he's seen it.
Okay.
Just the three of us. I can give you the, I've gone through the book, so I can give you the book after tonight, if you want to look at the hard copy.
Yeah, I won't get it. I mean, I'm out of town next week, so I won't get through by then, but if we're not, we don't need it by September.
No, no, we'll just do it in September.
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay. And then I have one community partner application, and I will disclose, this is my daughter's organization, so she has an organization called Backpack Fairies. They collect school supplies and backpacks to provide to underprivileged children. Backpacks are distributed anonymously by the school principal, Linda Balfour and Lisa Altham, who have already identified children in Norfolk K-6 schools that could use them, and they would be willing to be the conduit to hand those off. It was started last year, she raised, between money and donations, she was able to provide 72 children last year with backpack filled with supplies, paper, pencils, protractors, whatever else, you know, K-6 children need. And what reason she would like to be a community partner is just so she could send out one connect ed once per year, asking for donations, and at the same time, also identify, you know, let people know that this service is out there, so if anyone has a need, they can, you know, that either Linda or Lisa doesn't know about, they could, you know, they can call in and let them know that they have a need. So I will, I guess I have to abstain.
I was gonna say, could we even vote?
Do you have enough people?
We don't have enough people. So you take yourself out of it, it's just me and Kelly.
That's true. Yeah, because I really can't vote on that.
I was just gonna say, I don't think you can.
Well, that's too bad, so that means she won't be able to do it this year.
She, she, actually, what we could do for this year is you can post it on the web information.
Right.
In the community bulletin.
Right.
We just can't do the connect ed.
Yeah, I was gonna say, but, yeah, I was gonna say, that's, you're not, as I was gonna say, that's not going to get, especially in the summer, it's not going to.
Right.
Hit anyone, so. All right, well, maybe Mark will show up later, and we can, we can revisit that. Yeah, we're not going to be able to vote on any of the other committees. Oh, that's right. All right, and so that's all I have on my report.
Okay. All right, I have a few things. First, I just wanted to introduce to you, we did, over the summer, hire some new staff members, and I asked our new technology director, Michael Yang, to come tonight, so I could introduce him to the committee. Mike is going to be filling the role, again, the joint technology director, part for the schools, part-time and part-time for the town. He started yesterday, and we've inundated him with issues already, so.
He's all caught up, okay.
He's all caught up, but he's going to be very busy. Mike did get his undergraduate degree from University of Rhode Island in systems management, and he has a master's degree in education from Bridgewater State Estate in instructional technology. He's been working in Foxborough for the past six years, I believe, Mike, and so we're very excited to have Mike joining us. So, Mike, if you want to just come up, I'll introduce you. This is Kelly Peterson, School Committee.
How are you?
Welcome.
Thomas Doyle. And Sean, I think you've met.
We've met. He's actually, was in my office today for about an hour and a half, fixed a bunch of problems, a bunch of things that we've been needing for.
A while.
For several months, was able to get them all knocked out.
Excellent.
I got more service today than I did in the past year, so. So I'm, so, so as I said, I told him, Michael, we set the bar nice and low for you, and so you've already exceeded it, so we just got to keep going, so.
So, welcome to Mike, and thanks for coming tonight, and we don't want to hold you. Mike does have young children at home, or young child at home, so we don't want to make you stay, but I wanted you to have a chance to meet the committee, so, great, thank you.
If you want to sneak out, now's your chance.
Yep, now's your chance. Mike's office will be upstairs, next to Raph's office in the Freeman Kennedy, and if you need anything from him, that's where you'll find him. The other thing that I have for you, this is just informational, we're required by the regulations to share with you the annual budget from BIKO, so you'll find in your packet, and I'm sure you've already reviewed it, just the anticipated budget for 2014, and some additional information on salaries and special positions. So that's in your packet. The other thing in your packet is, we've been providing you an update on where we stand as far as collection of past due fees. Pam and Donna have worked really, really hard at this, and we've made significant gains. We were about, yeah, we were about $75,000 in past due balances, and it's down now to $7,000. I mean, even since you, your packets went out on Friday, we've collected several more checks, so we're actually down now to $7,150 in outstanding fees. The total past due for food services is $200, and the past due for SAC is $2,300. So we're really doing very well. I think the new policy, which requires families to either develop a payment plan or bring their accounts to balance before they enroll in any new tuition-based programs, has really helped us collect a lot of past due balances over the course of the summer.
That's a great two charge. What is that from? I relate to, I was confused by that one.
Probably Buss.
Buss, yep.
And they have started a payment plan? I know the, I know one person, one person was responsible for more than 50%.
Yep.
They've actually started a real payment plan?
Yep.
That's actually the grade two, the child's actually in grade two.
Two, right.
But it was for past due.
Oh, right, okay.
Yep, yep, but deposits have been received.
Okay. So that should be even lower.
Yep, that's why it's $7,150 now.
No, I mean, but their number should be below $3,600?
Yep, it's $2,800, but that came in after the package went out, that's why.
Oh, after the package, perfect, all right. Good, so.
So we're in good, good shape. Budget transfers. In your packet, at the conclusion of the school year, we ended up with some additional savings in the special ed account for instructional assistance and instructional services. So what we had the option to do was to do a budget transfer, and the recommendation of Todd Hassett, our business manager, was to do that budget transfer and to use that savings of $43,500 to purchase equipment that's part of the HOD playground project. The reason for that is that the playground project, as it stands, does not have any project contingency funds, so if we run into difficulties with excavating or with the well, we don't have a project contingency. So by doing this, it gives us money for project contingency. Also, the money had to be spent by the end of the fiscal year, so if we did not do that, we would have returned the money to the town and would not have been able to use it. So I just need a vote to approve the budget transfer from the savings in special ed instructional assistance to fund the playground equipment purchase.
So moved.
Sir second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Did you say aye, Kelly?
Aye, indeed, yes.
Okay, staffing update. I just wanted to let you know where we stand as far as summer positions. We have filled the assistant principal position at the HL day, we're excited about that. We hired a candidate, her name is Anita Mecklenburg. She has great experience and a lot of curriculum experience and background. I will invite her to the September meeting to meet the committee. She's currently in Ireland, so she couldn't make it tonight.
Oh, excuse me.
She was busy. We did fill the elementary developmental math specialist as well. We hired a woman named Eileen Clodier from, who's been working in Rentham, has some really strong background in assessment and in math intervention, so I think she's a great hire. We filled the therapeutic position here at the Freeman Kennedy, which was a position we were struggling with. We did readvertise, and we hired a very experienced candidate for that position, who comes with a special education and a behavioral background. So, her name is Jackie Buckner, and she'll be starting with us.
Is that, that's a full-time?
Full-time position. Then we filled the technology director, Mike Yang, you met earlier. We do have two open positions at this point that we're still interviewing for. There is a .5 position at the HOD that's a job share for, I believe, its first grade, because Lynn Kelty, who was in that position, was, received a waiver from the Department of Ed to fill the reading vacancy that we had. We have final candidates, but we're not ready to announce, the posting has to close, and we have to complete the process. So that should be in the next couple of days. And then we have the .6 technology specialist position that was added in the budget. We're really struggling to find a highly qualified candidate for that, so we just readvertised, we're going to continue to search, but if we don't find the right fit, we may come back to the committee and consider not filling that for the fall, and maybe filling it full-time in January for the remainder of the year, or looking at other options. You know, we really don't want to bring someone in that's not going to be able to lead the technology campaign for the school, so we're continuing to advertise for that. Any questions on staffing, or? I think we're in a pretty good position. The next thing that I need to talk to you about is the kindergarten class size. We have an issue in our kindergarten. We have significantly larger enrollment for this upcoming kindergarten class than we had last year. Last year, we had 95 students in the kindergarten. We currently have 133 registered for next year, so we're up by about 40 students, almost, which is pretty significant. It was not anticipated in any of the census data or anything like that. As the registrations went on and we were further in the budget, we had the sense that we were going to need to add an additional classroom. But even with that additional classroom that was added, our kindergarten class size in the full-day program will be over what the policy limit is, what that you've set, so we can go back to that after. So by policy, the limit that the school committee set for class size for kindergarten was 21. In our full-day class, 21. It's more in the upper grades.
I thought it was 22 and 25.
I don't remember.
It was, we can pull it up on the policy, but it was, when I looked, it was 21. But our kindergarten class sizes, we will have four classes of 23 and one class of 24 in the full day for next year. The half-day class has already 16, and anybody new moving into the district that enrolls will go into the half-day, and we typically do get enrollment in August because families move to start their children at the beginning of the year. So, from a budget standpoint, we already had to add one full-time kindergarten teacher and full-time assistant after the budget to accommodate the enrollment. We do not have the financial resources in the budget to add a sixth kindergarten class at this point. What we would recommend, and what I would recommend, we did have the secretary at the HOD and Pam call every family just to verify that their child's enrolled, that they will be attending, that they've chosen a full day. We do have about 15 families we haven't heard back from. Often, over the summer, if families move, they don't notify the school. So I don't know if those people are on vacation, or if there's a potential that some of these students, very often, the first day of kindergarten, kids that you're expecting don't come because they've moved or something's happened over the summer. So what I would recommend is that the committee consider approving that we override the policy for this year, because, but what I would like to do, and I've talked to Linda Balfour, and I've talked to Todd Hassett about it, we're rearranging the schedule for the day for kindergarten. We're going to put specials, which would be art, music, wellness, in the afternoon, and the kindergarten will have a slightly later lunchtime. What I'd like to do is wait until the first week of school till we have a final count, so we know, you know, the class of 24 could end up at 21, could end up at 22. If the numbers hold and we end up with 24 and 23, I would recommend adding two halftime assistants to the kindergarten that would come and be here in the morning, so those classrooms would have additional support during their academic times. So they would, you know, one person would be between two classes, but they would be there to support the reading and the math times. They obviously wouldn't be in the class for snack. And then the specials in the afternoon, they have rest time because it's a full-day program, they have specials, they'll have lunch. So we would have the additional support for the academic parts of the program. So that is something that we can fund. So I guess what I'd like to do is have the committee approve that we move forward with that plan, but we won't actually advertise and fill those positions till after the first day of school until we know. We did just interview for an open kindergarten halftime assistant for the half-day program that we had as a vacancy. We have a number of excellent candidates from that that would be available to go into those positions, should we need them, based on the counts the first week of school.
Okay.
It's a situation that even if we close full day and we move, we don't have enough room in the half-day to accommodate the additional children. We've got 16 already, we are over by 10 kids, so that would put us at 26. So either way, we would be, we would be adding staffing to meet the needs of those kids.
Okay. Is there a motion to amend the policy for this year?
So moved.
Sir second?
Second.
Okay, discussion? I mean, I know, Thomas and I were on the committee when we pushed really hard for these limits. I feel at least a little more comfortable with this one from the standpoint of, you know, there is a full-time assistant in the classroom, so still, even at 24 children, it's, you know, a 1 to 12 ratio, and then if we have during all the, you know, academic times, the other, you know, then it's going to be a 1 to 8 ratio, so.
As well, hire skilled assistants to be in there to support the academic time.
And there's, you don't feel there's going to be a problem with hiring that late?
No, because we have a bank of candidates for this one open position we've hired, that we're going to be filling with somebody, and there are other people that were highly qualified, that are very interested in positions, and they were applying for a halftime job.
Okay.
So we have a pool of people available for that, so I'm not concerned about filling them.
And due to the economy, there's, we're not worried about losing them to somewhere?
No, we've got people that are involved in teacher preparation programs, are part-time in school, there's a pretty, there's a pretty good pool for that.
Okay.
So our enrollment this, so far, is 133 students?
133, we're up by.
All of those are full-time?
No, there is 118 full-time and 17, 16 in the part-time.
And we have five, five?
Five sessions of full day and one halftime.
Unless you're, we had four.
We had four, so we've already added another fifth classroom. You know, it's really, I think it's a good thing for the district that we're seeing enrollment start to increase, it's just that 40 kids is a lot to, when you're not anticipating that, you know, new enrollment.
Now, what does that do with the financials of?
Well.
Obviously, we've got more students, we have more income coming in, and this is supposed to be a zero.
It was really, it was really tight to even fund the additional fifth grade after the budget with the additional tuition revenue, partly because you have to have a full-time teacher and an assistant in that extra classroom, so when we added, we've used all the additional revenue to fund that. So we're going to really have to be, that's why I'm recommending rearranging the specials and going with two halftime peoples, so that we can support all the academics. The cost of that is about $18,000, so we are looking at, I was able to get the Title I grant again this year, so that funds .2% of the math specialists and leaves us with some flexibility, but we're going to have to look at other areas of the budget to move funds around, and it's pretty tight.
But 18, I mean, it's either $18,000 or $78,000, I mean, it's basically the.
Right, right. And also, to try to add, I mean, we've got space issues, you've got difficulty with the specials, so if you add a sixth class, you have to try to fit another classroom into the specials rotation on tight schedules, so it's, I think this is the best situation. And it also allows us to accommodate the families' requests. You know, we had a lot of people really looking for full-day programming, so we didn't have to turn anybody down, and we can still provide, you know, I think, really good teacher-student ratios and quality instruction, you know, with that arrangement of staffing.
Okay. Any other questions? Mark?
I think I got the gist of it getting here a little.
A little late.
And we'll have to plan, obviously, in the budget for six classes, probably, for first grade.
Do we, from a, from a room standpoint, how are we doing from actual, actual, physical room?
Okay, yep, we'll be okay. We do have a space that we rented to BIKO, so that's also bringing some additional revenue that may help us offset this cost, too. But we do have a full room for technology that we could reallocate if we needed to. We'll be able to accommodate.
Oh, during the corner?
Yeah.
Okay. And where, in technology, just put them?
We could store equipment in a different way, and, yeah.
Okay, yeah, because that's a, that's a full classroom, right?
We do have some flexibility, yeah, it is.
I forgot about that one.
Is there any other way we could possibly bring funds in to help offset this? I know we got, but any other way without necessarily, like, increasing fees on anything, which I think is too late to do anyway?
Well, I think, I think we're.
And we can't increase the tuition or fees.
Well, we can't increase tuition, we can't, we're not allowed to go out and.
Fundraise.
Fundraise, you know, from a BOE standpoint, so, I mean, I think, you know, and this lady.
And that, that amount of revenue, we would not be able to do, to sustain, so.
So, I was gonna say, but, you know, the crazy thing is that I, you know, I know that, you know, we looked at it, this, you know, we knew we were going to be up a little bit based on census, so, I mean, we must have.
That's two full classes, which we were completely not anticipating.
Yeah, we were anticipating, I mean, I think we anticipated one, because we had that originally in the, in the budget, but that's, it's just, so I guess a lot of people with kids moved it down.
Actually, we didn't even anticipate the one, we thought we were going to be up about 10 kids, but, so it wasn't budgeted, but kindergarten registration happens late March, so we had those numbers after the budget had been voted.
Right.
We knew in March we needed to add that one class, so we've been working on how to fund that through, through the spring, but to add a second one was just not.
When is the, so, I mean, I guess, in theory, if, let's say, five people drop out, we might have to move kids around in class on the first day, even though the.
We might, I don't think we'll lose that many. What we might do is if you end up with a class that two kids don't show in, it's only at 21, then we might allocate those additional supports to the other four classes and not to that one. You know, well, that's why I really want to wait to hire or fill anything till we know what the total count looks like.
Okay.
But we'll do it in the best way that's most equitable for the kids.
Okay. Any other discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That's all I have.
Okay.
What was the specifics on the playground? Do we have any, you have that listed?
Do we have any, you have that listed?
Oh, I'm sorry, I skipped right over that. HOD playground, I'm sorry, I do have an update on that. The original bidder that we awarded the contract to for HOD withdrew their bid because they had misquoted the playground surfacing, and they told us they could not come in at their bid price. From a legal perspective, we could have held them to the bid, but I wasn't comfortable. They really had more experience in roadwork and bridge work. I wasn't comfortable holding them to a bid where I felt like they were going to be cutting corners to save costs because they were so under budget. So we allowed them to withdraw. We awarded the bid to the second lowest bidder, who has much more playground experience. I'm very comfortable with him, it's ProBilt. And the only problem with that is it did cause a delay in the project because ProBilt, when they were not awarded the bid, accepted another project that they're currently working on. They are expected to mobilize and they should be on site at the end of this week. The goal was for them to at least do the excavation work that they need to do. All of the playground equipment is in, it's been ordered, and the installers are ready to put it in next week. So if they can come in and do the, just the excavation, they think that's going to be two to three days of work, we should start seeing equipment going in next week. Then ProBilt will, once the equipment's all in, they will come back to do the remaining site work. They'll do the surfacing, they'll do the tree removal, they'll do the field irrigation system and the walkway. The other work they, we decided the best way to go for the well for the irrigation system was for ProBilt to get three quotes, so they're getting quotes, and we're going to do that as a change order of the project so that ProBilt manages the timeline for that. Our goal is to get the well in during the summer, in August if possible, because that will disrupt the traffic pattern, and we don't want that during school because the well has to go in a particular location, and they're going to have to run piping along the street there. So hopefully, the equipment will be in, the well will be in. The project completion date is not, they wanted to stretch it out until, I believe it's October 14th. So we know that we won't have a playground for the first month of school, and they're going to have to use the back playground in other areas. I expect it'll be done earlier than that, but again, because ProBilt had taken another contract, they weren't sure how that project was going to run, they wanted to give themselves some extra time on the end.
Right. And I wanted to hold their bond and everything like that, but...
Sometimes it's more work.
It became more work than...
We all have questions about their bid anyway.
We did.
Some stuff was off.
Yes. It was a bid that was written in hand and they put in at the last minute, but legally, we had to award to the lowest qualified bidder, and their reference is checked, so I don't think it's a bad thing. I think we'll get a better quality work from this project.
Yeah, that was the other thing, we don't want to stick them to it because then, you know, they're going to just cut every single corner.
Yeah, they're going to make it up somehow.
Yeah, they would have made the money up.
And they were, I think it was, they were like...
$40,000 off on surfacing. They quoted it at 70.
But their quote for the, versus the second low bidder was only a couple thousand dollars. It wasn't a significant difference anyways, and so.
So that's the each all-day.
I was gonna say, and although additional playground got taken down by Andy Bakkenowski.
Yes, I should thank him. Andy and his son came and did all the removal. I did send him a letter on our behalf and to his son, but they volunteered their time on two of the probably hottest days of the summer to come and cut out all the old equipment. They recycled all the metal, and they came and brought us a check for the recycled value of the metal that went back into the project. So that was great.
Cool.
Yes, they did.
Call that Andy.
Digging up a fence, they ran into bunnies.
It was right in the one ramp that the kids stomp on to get up on the equipment.
Yep.
It was the last thing that he pulled up, and since he turned up to cut outside, he kept crying, but they gently dug and then moved on. Our students at the junior year, they took them out and cleaned them up.
Oh, great. That's okay.
We'll call him Baby Bunny the next time.
Yes, there you go.
Say, okay, committee reports. Nest, I don't have anything. King Philip? Jeff's not here. Budget, Kelly?
I have nothing.
Nothing yet.
You're already 17,000 in the hole. Technology, Jeff's not here. Policy, we have one reading.
It's the technology acceptable use policy in agreement.
So we basically, basically take, took out the...
Took out the policy.
It's basically a new policy.
Okay.
And we did look at the...
So it's not everything that's read, it's everything that's...
Yeah, it's crossed out.
Yes.
When did the original policy date from?
It wasn't that old.
I was gonna say, it wasn't only two years old?
Yeah, there were some issues with it, and the mask put out a new model policy that we looked at, some legal changes. I have had our attorney take a look at this, and then it responds to some issues that came up over the course of the year.
Okay, so, so just, you know, based on the notes, the first one on 319131, including the sexual harassment policy, affirmative action policy, payment on other policies, I don't, I think that's just redundant. I don't know what the rest of the committee thinks. You're saying all policies? Page two, oh, page, sorry, page three?
Page two.
Page three, top one that's called out.
First paragraph?
First paragraph, the part that's highlighted. To be consistent with other Norfolk Public Schools policies, and I don't think specifying particular policies.
Yeah, but there's no sense of that in there, I mean, it's supposed to be all of the policies.
Right, exactly.
They may say with all other, they all, I don't know.
Yeah, I think the only reason that was in there was, at the beginning of last year, do you remember, we had to go and do incidental changes to a whole bunch that added some of this language, but now they've been updated, so this is redundant.
Alternative gender specific, yeah.
But now that those policies are current, I think you can, this is redundant.
Let's take that out. The next one I actually don't mind having in. You know. I mean, I think that's...
Reasonable.
I think that's reasonable, I don't know, I don't think you necessarily need it, but I don't mind it being called out for.
I mean, I guess the only thing to, what defines non-school personal is...
Right.
Broadly interpreted.
That's what we define.
Right, I mean, I mean, or...
We put it with the de minimis use so that it's, you know, incidental use, that it can't, the goal of the policy was that it can't, you can't use school property and school equipment to run your own home business. But for teachers that need to check home email to coordinate kids' schedule during the day, you know, de minimis, personal use of equipment was acceptable.
And we have that policy?
We do, I don't have it, I don't have it here, the subcommittee is working on cleaning that up and bringing that forward.
Right. I guess the only, the only other question I had was the, during non-instructural times, I mean, I think that's kind of, I'm fine with before and after school, but during school?
It was during teachers prep when students aren't present, so like a teacher might have a 40-minute period where kids are in gym and they need to check and coordinate schedules or something like that. So that's where we said non-instructural, when they don't have teaching responsibilities.
Yeah, we talked about, you know, about it being specifically when there's no students in the classroom and they're not around students. That way, the students aren't seen and do their personal stuff at school.
Any other thoughts? Leave it in, take it out?
I think it's fine, I mean, the students not being there is a more important thing.
Did we clarify on page six, the privacy and photography form?
We have to develop that. Basically, the change here is that in the past, the district has had an opt-in plan so that parents had to sign consent for their children's pictures to be taken, to be published in local things like the local newspaper or, and the advice from the attorneys is to go the other way and have an opt-out so that the assumption is that all students can be photographed for local media and for educational purposes, and then if a parent has a concern that they need to opt-out. So we need to have a form, this form will just be an opt-out form, saying that they do not want their child's picture taken and that it gets submitted to the office. So we're working on that.
And who's, who is signing this, all teachers, all staff?
Staff and then students will, parents, it will go in the handbook, so parents need...
Parents will sign it as well, okay. Okay. Any other changes, anything anyone else wants to add? No.
Let me.
Kelly? It's not the final reading anyway, so we can...
Yeah, we'll play around with it, but it seemed fine.
When we come for the next reading, we'll have the forms.
Okay, perfect.
Bring a look at in the de minimis use.
Okay. All right. Only other thing I wanted to bring up, Anne Proto brought this up to me yesterday, so it's not necessarily on the agenda, but I just kind of wanted to discuss it, you know, to kind of give policy some direction to look into. She's pointed out to me that the, our school use policy for like the gyms and things like that is being a little bit abused. There are certain outside organizations that come in and reserve tons of time. You know, it's, ABC basketball program comes in and says, you know, I want, we want, you know, seven to nine o'clock every single night this week and everything like that, and they're coming in and basically jumping ahead of, you know, they're blocking out all this time, and it eliminates, you know, regular residents and things like that from being able to do it, because they'll do it for the entire winter, you know, session for, you know, for basketball. And one of the problems is, you know, one, it's not allowing other people to do it, but two, since we don't charge for nonprofit groups, they're just blocking it out and maybe not using it. And they're just, because they've got the time reserved, so if they, you know, they need it overflow, you know, Norfolk Public Schools is nice, you know, we've got it locked in, we're not having to pay anything, we're not locked into anything, then, you know, we're done with it. And at the same time, we also have had a couple other school, for-profit organizations that have reserved time and then not shown up and then refused to pay because they didn't use it. So I think that, those are things that we might want to tweak, I want to tweak, I'll get your guys' opinion on the policy, creating some, you know...
The issue with the gym space is that the other available space in this area, King Philip, does charge for nonprofit groups. They charge a $10 room fee and a $30 labor fee, so it's $40, and so do some of the other areas. So what her perception is, is that groups that aren't quite sure what their schedule will be will book with us because there's no penalty and there's no cost to the gym rather than booking space they're going to pay for, and that blocks out rec programs and other things. So her recommendation was that we consider adding a fee for nonprofit groups for gym rental to be more competitive with other...
Who are some of the nonprofit groups?
You get like CYO, you get East West Basketball, you get, there's another large regular basketball organization that does it.
Right, okay.
But I really want to look at the actual data and look at what everybody else is charging, you know, I think that's what the policy subcommittee could do.
I thought those nonprofits were actually paying for the gym.
No, our policy has nonprofits don't have to pay, just profits.
They do on the weekends, they don't during core hours when the school is open.
From seven to...
Seven to nine during the week, but on the weekends, they are charged.
In the evenings?
Our students are here at night, so those are not non-instructural hours. So the seven to nine is no fee.
Well, being affiliated with one of those nonprofit organizations...
We pay for the rec.
I was, yeah, we pay for the rec, but also for Metro West Basketball, which is not considered a nonprofit.
Right.
I was unaware that they were getting a free ride here.
Right.
So if that's the case, then yeah, we should.
Well, here's a question that I would have, you know, we can maybe keep the, it being free for the nonprofits, but add in a caveat that they put down a deposit for the space.
But if we're not charging them for it...
And if they don't show up, if they show up and use the space, they get their deposit back. But since we're holding it and not allowing other people to use it, if they don't show up, then they forfeit that deposit. It could be a small deposit, 40 bucks, you know, a day.
Right.
And they don't show up, then they forfeit that deposit, you know, and then we can, you know, if they do it enough times, then we can eventually say, look, you know, granted, you guys have lost your deposits many times, but you guys aren't showing up for the time you've rented, so we're going to put you further back. And we can also put local groups or communities, people in the community have precedence or priority. So if they want it and this group hasn't been showing up the past couple days, then that group gets bumped and the residents get priority.
Right. And I think the only problem with that is I think it gets overly complicated then, you know, I think, you know...
Just to go, it'll be tough.
Yeah, and just from a, just from a cost standpoint, if everyone else is charging, I think we should probably be closer to be in line with everyone else. From the standpoint of, one, we're not flush with cash, I mean, you know, Kelly's already 17,000 in the hole, we've, we've... And, you know, and there is a certain amount of wear and tear used on the gym floor. I mean, you know, we do have to have the floors buffed and things along those lines and by having these organizations there. And most of these organizations, it's not like you're joining East West Basketball and the families aren't paying a fee to play. You know, you're, you're just passing that cost along, and it's...
If everyone else is charging, I think we're still looking.
And that's what I'd like to do as the policy committee, to just really collect all the information, see what everybody else's rates are.
This is just our facilities, the two facilities here, not KB Middle School.
Right.
No, they are charged, they charge $40.
Okay, yeah, I'm with that. So it's not necessarily that they're squatting the area and no one can use it, it's that they're getting it for free.
For free, so they are overbooking.
Right.
Because there's no penalty, so...
Do we let them book both schools, both gyms at the same time?
Yeah.
Maybe we could limit that.
And I know that was a bit...
They're going to pay, so you can have it.
I mean, well, I think, but I think that was part, and I think we resolved some of it from the standpoint of, you know, basically, schools have to go first and then rec, and then it gets opened up, whereas, you know, like last year, they came in the day, you know, before school even opened and said, all right, let's see the book, and they just, you know, took every single available evening, you know, gym time that they could, and I know there was some that, you know, would not show up.
They'll take everything they can get, you know, I would too if I was on the committee.
Yes, I was gonna say, there's no loss, I mean, there's, you know, if it's free...
I think the issue is you have a much more marketable gym now than you used to have, so that's why it's a new issue, nobody was begging for the old space.
Right, exactly.
So, but I think the policy, that can be first on our agenda for our September meeting, and we can come back with a proposal for that.
I got a lot of ideas for that.
Do some research.
Right, right, and that's just a minor change, so we probably don't really even need to do a three reading on that one.
No, it'd just be the fee scale structure.
So that was, so there's some direction for you, Mark.
Absolutely.
Separate subject, not related or seasonally related. The parking during baseball season is a nightmare out there. Going to pick up a kid from Zack, you're taking your life in your hands to hope you don't get hit.
Yep.
I know that the baseball people are pretty good, the organization, I saw them send out a number of emails...
Yep.
That every single person promptly ignored, but need to figure something out, because that is an absolute nightmare out there. I actually worry about like a kid getting hit.
Do you think that it'll be improved when the new parking goes in? Because that should be, okay.
I just, I have concerns with a kid getting hit or, you know, at the much lesser scale, a car getting hit, whatever the case is, I mean, it just, it just needs to be fixed. I mean, it's, you get double parking on both sides, you can't only fit one car going down, then you've got a car coming, and it just...
I wasn't aware of it, but I'll take a look at it, and, you know, I think with the additional parking, it may help, but we might have to put some signage out there, and we might have to send some connected out.
You have a line of cars up around the fire lane, and like, okay, not supposed to do that, guys, unless something breaks out, I mean...
And we might have to have the police, you know, do drive-throughs for, to make sure that we're enforcing the...
To the baseball organization's credit, they did regularly send emails out, and they did tell people, don't do that, but it was just...
But, I mean, you, you, one or two toes and tickets, the words get out.
That's right, we might have to go that route, but let's see what we can do in terms of, with the new parking, what that traffic flow looks like, and then we can...
It can't be one, but I just, it just drove me crazy.
Yeah, I mean, you're going to get people in for games, especially football season starting up, there's going to be a lot of traffic in here that's from out of town that's unfamiliar.
Right.
So a part of our problem is that we don't, there's probably not good signings to say which way is the flow.
To go, yeah.
I get confused too.
Yeah, we're going to have to look at the signage, too.
We're getting a new sign for there, the do not enter.
Yes, so that people won't come in the wrong way there.
Right, and we got the new superintendent sign.
14 feet up in the air, but yes, it's there.
Just randomly shoved in the ground, I guess that's a call you need to make to Bob.
Yes, I do need to call him that.
I'll follow up with Bob too, I see Bob every day.
But we do, we might need, also need to do some speed signs.
Yep.
You know, we really have to look at that, because people do come in way too fast.
Especially down the access road.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's turned into the auto bond now.
Nobody saw me doing that today, okay? You can't prove anything.
You were still a half hour late.
They should have gone faster, huh?
So we definitely can look at those, those things.
All right, just, we'll go back to the one last thing. Mark, I was able, I had to abstain from it. My daughter's proposing backpack ferries as community partner. I don't know if you, I don't want to repeat everything for everyone, so if you can read that for two seconds.
Okay. Supplies for like less fortunate?
Donating backpacks, less fortunate kids, and then be coordinated to the principals.
All right, that's all I need to know about that.
Okay, any discussion on approval for backpack ferries?
They're not going to make me wear fairy wings.
Exactly, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, aye for my daughter. And last but not least, minutes, anyone have any adjustments for the minutes? You weren't here, so.
Hello. I seconded all kinds of things.
Oh, did you? Okay. Did you come in late? Maybe that's what it was.
Yeah, I'm fine.
All right, and we probably need to put him in up on the...
Don't he notice, didn't have me listed?
No, I don't...
Oh, I'm missing on roll call.
You're missing on the roll call. Sorry, but you did second something, so you must have...
I'm like, oh, well, I just looked at the roll call, I don't remember.
I was here.
I can't think back that far.
I was late for that meeting, too.
They even started remembering things.
It's hard when I can't get people...
Yeah, Mr. Doyle's seconded it.
Yep.
All right, he's all over the place.
Yeah, because I remember we were talking about the landscape.
Yeah, and we had the full committee for the executive session too, so, yeah.
Their sod price was ridiculous, that's what I remember specifically.
Yeah.
Yep. Sorry.
It was golden sod.
Yeah.
Okay. Motion to accept the minutes?
So moved.
Second? Oh, let's see, that way you can get on the roll, you can second a motion, so you can make sure you're here.
I seconded it.
No one seconded it?
Oh, I'll second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
And next meeting?
Was it the 10th?
I think we have it scheduled for the 10th, right?
It looks like.
I have, I personally have a conflict that night, I'm doing my EMT refresher.
It's important, learning EMT stuff for school committee.
No, it's, it depends, if you're in the back of the ambulance and I'm working on you. You might, you might want me to be at the EMT.
I might be asking for a new technician.
Yeah, that's probably a good sign.
You want to do it the 17th?
I was gonna say, it's all month, every Tuesday night.
Uh-huh.
So, I don't know if we can move till, if you guys are okay moving till Wednesday?
Uh...
Kelly?
Yeah, my schedule's fairly open this year, so next month.
Does September 11th work for you, Mark?
Yeah, that would work.
Does it work for you?
I think that's fine.
Good, thank you, guys. All right, we do not have anything for our executive session, so is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.